Fledges allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. You have your copy of the maps? And reviewed them without the smudges?
Now they got them on there, too.
Aren't you judging?
Well, I didn't see this.
I'm looking now.
I didn't see it on the copy.
Motion, make a motion except in previous minutes?
One second.
On paper? All right. Okay. Claims warrants. End of the month, September 2024, fifty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and forty-one cents. And the September 19th meeting, if you didn't have us, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, forty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. And we get the payroll warrants for nine twenty-six, ten-three, ten-ten, ten-seventeen, ten-twenty-four, an amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eighteen cents. And bank reconciliations for the end of the month, September 2024, utilities, two million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-three cents for the town, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-six cents. Payroll, two thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. And customer deposits, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars even. Motion to approve all of those.
I'll move to accept the claims and warrants for September 24 and also for tonight's meeting, payroll warrants and the bank reconciliations as stated.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
It kind of floats. Here you go.
Yes, ma'am.
All for you. Lucky lucky.
Come on, say "you" then.
Much longer.
Yeah, never mind it.
You're after quiet, Cindy.
Love to come and talk.
I really don't like that thing.
There we go, Kathy. Thank you.
You guys had any discussion about how you're going to handle your line stream? I know you bought that five thousand dollar cam, right?
We...
The town of Rosedale's taking the position that what that reverse does meets the statute, and they're doing nothing but contending to use our service themselves. But again, I know you bought a five thousand dollar cam.
No, we didn't. That would be fine. No, we didn't buy anything yet. That'd be fine, but that means you'd have to be at every Rosedale meeting, every single one they called. That could be a problem for me.
There'd probably be a contingency plan for that.
Contingency? No. I was going to scan and email you what Cindy gave me, but I haven't gotten to that yet. There's a lot going on right now.
I know, yeah.
Really hadn't been brought up anywhere else.
Yeah.
At the, at least...
That seemed to work pretty good.
Yeah. I've seen at the partnership meeting, that works good. Okay, we got one billing adjustment, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-six cents for account number 5090.01. Nancy Maxwell, underground leak, replaced all that, and all the lines replaced where the underground leak was and had affected the October and November billings.
Yeah, she had totally run from the meter to the house, all underneath the house. She had a mess.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion if all the paperwork's done on it to make a motion for that billing.
Sergeant.
On paper?
Aye.
My brain wouldn't work.
Your mouth wasn't good.
Couldn't put it together.
Okay. Budget ordinance, 2024-10-01. Nothing voided. The new budget is 2024-10-04 for approval and signatures. And nobody thought about the sound of it being taken? Huh?
Not a one of us, but they reminded us.
They do pay attention, don't they?
We all knew it, but we just...
Yeah, as soon as you said that, I thought. Because we did zip right on to that.
Well, I apologize, because that was probably my fault.
No harm, no foul.
Because we didn't...
We didn't even talk about it.
We didn't even think about it.
We didn't even talk about it.
It's silly rule.
Crazy, but yeah. So anyhow, they picked it up in time. In time for us to be able to pass this this evening, and then I'll forward it in the morning, and we're good to go.
So you need a motion?
Yes.
But I carry for me.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2025 budget ordinance.
Sergeant.
On paper?
Aye.
Hi, I'm staying.
Yeah.
You did write this down?
Yes.
We just needed it to say that, so we could have followed the rules.
All you guys will A or I have to sign, and then sign.
Okay.
I still signed it, yeah.
Yes. I got two more.
Now Kathy, she's done for the year now.
No.
She's through, hasn't missed. Okay.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-10-01, local bond funds transfer for the 2025 budget.
I'll make a motion. Is that, is that what you're needing?
Yeah.
I'll make motion to, for the resolution 2024-10-01, local funds transfer for the fire truck one.
Sergeant.
Do we have to abstain from that?
Yeah.
I'd be best, yeah, I don't know, I mean... Anything involving fire or anything we have to submit to the OGF, we probably should...
Or abstain from that, you do?
You know, this is already bought and paid, what I paid for.
Yeah, and doesn't affect anything really. Okay, so it'll be you three. That's for that billing adjustment.
There's that. Oh, wow, wow. Killed a lot of trees today.
Yes.
There you go. You don't have to feel like that or nothing.
Thank you. Maybe I should just do it.
It's in skip anyway.
Yeah, I know.
The PAMP update approval. I got that email from Kathy about that paving thing.
I've seen that.
What was the number, the email?
It's just the plans of the update that they wanted you to approve. You already approved the amount to be paid.
Thank you.
They just had to revise some of the streaks in need and...
Dug up a couple cents, or one cent, two places.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the P, what is it, P A M P?
PAMP.
PAMP?
Pavement Asset Management Plan.
I didn't hear you say it.
Pavement Asset Management Plan.
Okay. I, I made a motion to approve that.
Sorry.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you. You all saw the thing at Cody's resignation. Final day will be November 4th. You've already advertised position and set application through the November 6th, 4:00 p.m. Do you want to get together and look over the applications before that meeting? So we can try to act on that.
Being executed either before or after, do you want to pick another day?
Same day.
Same day.
Yes. Don't you think we can move to the same day?
Same day.
Same day.
Instead of another day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many are we going to have?
How many we going to have? Anywhere from zero to...
Five.
We've had two calls so far.
Really?
Yeah.
Let's start at five and let it wait a little.
Sure.
Yeah. And we'll hopefully get it done, won't have to stay afterwards either.
This will be on the 9th?
Seven. Seven, November 7th.
So...
You need a motion to accept the...
Exactly. Yeah, so this... You know, if we're as the owner, just...
Can I discuss that?
So I have a motion to accept his resignation? Yeah.
You can't talk tonight, can you?
No. I guess, but did you see the email?
Yeah.
There was an email, that's a, but you can't discuss it here, so... That's why I'm not talking, because I haven't even reported on that, do you?
I didn't email, so I don't know what you're talking about.
You did.
I did?
Probably.
I just informed them of what was asked of me yesterday.
To inform myself, but...
He turned in the resignation, it's up to you to accept it or not.
Yeah.
Sergeant.
On paper?
Aye. Was you yes, and you were second?
Yes.
When did you get that email?
Just tonight.
Oh, okay, I don't know, I haven't seen it since.
From you?
This morning, 11 and 12.
Oh, I'm just, I just looked at it this evening before I came, so.
I did request to John when he responds to something. Did you, when his response to that, the resignation, it said, John Cook, from John Cook, R E resignation?
I guess I missed.
The one you sent out, he responded to that. So it just had the subject matter in the title was resignation, and you had to read to find out it wasn't John.
Oh, next time put, not me.
I just hit reply.
Yeah, you hit reply, but it puts a subject matter in there and... Okay, that's... Okay, Fishing Game Club has requested permission to block Water Street from Adams Street to the alley north of Adams for benefit Side by Side Ride on Saturday, the 26th, from 10 to around 6.
I think that sounds fine.
Any issues?
I make motion.
No?
Okay.
Sir, a second.
They going to come by my house again?
Um, I don't think so. It's being put on by road hogs, their first stop's going that way. They're trying to help the club out a little bit.
Grandson, grandson loves to watch some things go by.
Well, I think they take off at noon, so...
Do they?
Do you want to take him down there? They're headed that way.
Yeah, they're going to Macca first, and then Rosedale.
I saw the...
Ridgeston, I think.
Mansfield.
Mansfield, somebody said Mansfield's closed down, so I don't know.
Well, unless they did after the, after the festival, but as far as I know, I thought they were going to stay open and running.
I'm assuming they're closed.
Okay.
Would you agree, John?
Probably safe to say.
Oh, well, yeah, I knew, yeah, but...
And then trick or treating?
Yeah. I don't think we brought that up, because I have to think that's next week.
Yeah, I, I thought we talked about it a couple months ago, or when Diana...
We talked about trunk or tree and Pranks in the Park, which is Saturday, and then, there's a lot Saturday. But we didn't, we don't want trick or treating the same night as that, so I would say...
We've always done not Halloween before and down.
Friday.
Friday, yeah.
A date.
It is supposed to be, I, I saw, because Clinton did theirs this weekend, and I looked at the weather. Right now, they're saying it's going to rain.
Oh.
On Saturday?
Uh, Thursday night.
Halloween.
Halloween night.
Well, I hope they're wrong.
Wouldn't it bummer?
Send them channel 10, so it's supposed to be warm.
It could be spooky.
Yeah, but, yeah, but they're a week away saying 50%, and tomorrow it's down to 30 now.
I know, but they, it's got, it's got us like a couple days of rain.
We're going to move on into Friday.
That, I, it's going to be rainy starting, they, they say.
Two percent chance of a tornado, so.
Yeah.
Less candy that I have to buy this year.
Had to ruin it, you know, once in my life, and then one day you don't want to rain.
Yeah, now you ruined it for me, when they stopped by.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. They probably aren't stopping that, I don't know if they are.
I send it. You got something for us?
I don't, I was just curious, do you have any questions with Scott's timeline and what we're doing with the other grants?
I did send everybody, because I logged some long emails, apologies. We had to put the brakes for one of the dumbest reasons I've ever seen, and start over on bidding, which served no purpose other than just to delay everything. But we did talk to the many people in this SRF who are giving you, you know, 6.7 million dollars of grant money or something. And they said, that's fine, we'll, we'll bump you back a little bit. They don't like doing that, but they had an opening. And the only thing is, we're very tight on this timeline. We do need to get it done by the end of the year, and we don't have any spare days there hardly to speak. So I, I did send everyone an email, I don't know, a couple days ago. We had a conference call and bond council and financial people and everything, and Dustin and... So we'll be, we'll be pretty busy. There, Thanksgiving before Christmas, that, that's going to be pretty time crunching there. And there'll be a lot of documents that have to be prepared and sent over to SRF, and a lot of stuff for you guys to sign. But we're going to open bids, the next thing we'll do, the project will be a bid opening. It's the regular meeting, the November date, but it's at 4:30. So we will have, want to do interviews or something? You'll have a gap there probably of an hour before your regular meeting, where somebody, you know, it might be a good time to do another executive session. The bid opening will be public, but...
Which date is that?
21st. I sent, I did send it to you, John, I actually remembered the copy on an email for the first time ever, I think.
And we all need to be here for that?
At least three of you need to be here for the bid opening, preferably. We won't take action on the bids, but as soon as we get the bids the next morning, we're going to let the financial guys know, and then they'll be working to finalize the rate. We, they were going to already reach out to SRF this week to try and say here's what we think it's going to be, depending on what the bids are, to make sure they are aware of how high it is, so if there is any extra money under the cushion somewhere, or things they can do. I talked to bond lawyer again today. They do have some tricks that we know they, they've done in the past. No interest loan being one of them, which would be a big difference. Then we will have the, and part of the reason that's a time crunch is because we're going to hit Thanksgiving in there. So the week after your meeting will be Thanksgiving, and then we'll come back on December 5th, and that'll be the meeting where we do a final adoption of the rate ordinance, final adoption of the bond ordinance. That will be the public hearing on the rates. I emailed Kathy last night with, there's another notice we're sending out to the customer. Did you, did that other notice even get out?
Yes.
So we sent a notice out, and then two days later, we had to stop.
So that notice is dated November 3rd, or something, 13th?
It's going in the paper on the 13th.
So send it out prior to that, or...
Yeah, we need to send it out prior to that. And I gave Kathy, I don't know if they want to use you or not, just a little note to put in there, tell people that, you know, this is the rescheduled thing, we apologize for inconvenience. They're still welcome to attend, so. And then there, there's a pre-closing with SRF, I don't have the time yet, I do have the, the date, I don't know, December 17th, that's a virtual thing. They'll want Kathy for sure, a town board member, preferably Jay, but it doesn't have to be. Any of, anyone's welcome, John, you might want, I don't, it's not, it's up to you guys. But they definitely want you. So, take about an hour. And Pat will probably be getting in touch with you if he hadn't already, he's just, he's trying to make sure his members are still good.
Okay.
So...
I've got a few emails from up there.
From?
Derek.
Yeah, Derek Rush. So, yeah, you're going to, I, I can talk to you.
Just the W9 and...
They're going to, you're going to, you're going to start seeing, all the financial stuff will go through, except for Okra's stuff, will go through the Bank of New York. So when they loan the money, they just, it doesn't, it goes to an account in your name at the Bank of New York. And, well, not your name, but, you know... And, and, and it's going to be taken out without SRF's permission, so... So, there's that. But they will, you'll probably get an invoice for like 500 or a thousand dollars, pay charge or fee. So we got to pay that. And, you know, there'll be a lot of paperwork that, that will need to be signed. So Derek, yeah, Derek Rush, that's, and that's who, they will, and I can work with you on this, or, you know, they, we will start making monthly payments to SRF. And they'll give you an exact amount of how much every month. And they like an ECH, they don't like checks, so, so it's pretty easy.
We'll get it.
So...
Any more kidding news?
That's, Dustin said, Dustin, I asked Dustin, he said that he had personally called all the contractors who had come to the meeting and made sure they understood that there's, you know... This isn't one of these, we're not, we didn't cancel a bid opening because this thing's not happening. We just had a technical difficulty, and we had to start over, and he timed it, he wanted to do it on the, and it works, I think, you know, he said, I don't want to do it any later than Thanksgiving. But this gives those contractors even more time to try and put their bids together, so hopefully we'll get a lot of bids, I don't know.
Yeah, the advertisement started in tonight's paper, and it'll be in the first Wednesday of November paper.
Even though the law, the state statute only requires it to run one week apart, Okra wants it to run two weeks apart, so we're running it two weeks apart.
Well, the only thing Okra required is that we go ahead and keep the Baba language in there.
Yeah, I know, that, I talked to Dustin about that, and I said, I didn't, he said, yeah, I just give up, I just said, okay, fine.
Well, I just thought we better check, because I didn't want any more delays.
He said, and he said, I told all the contractor, our bid documents, we've clarified that, you know...
Keep the what in there?
Baba.
Build America by America.
So, a lot of lingo in the, in this stuff. So, he said that, you know, he said, I think you're going to get, now, there's a lot of interest in it, so, he mentioned a couple of companies, so, no. If we get good, a lot of bids, hopefully will result in a low, good low one.
Nice. And the one meeting that's on your schedule is the pre-bid meeting now, it's November 7th at 10:00 a.m.
They had to redo the, yes, they have to do another.
Okay.
It's like, well, everything that happened before never happened.
Yeah.
It's just... It was...
Is that at 10?
10 o'clock, where, uh, I assume he put this address.
Is that election day, or is that the 5th?
That's the 5th.
That's the 5th, okay, good.
And then there's that video or call-in thing coming up.
That's the 17th.
17, yeah. The 21st, I'll have to figure some stuff out, I want it being at 4:30, I'll have to...
You don't have, I mean, we just need, if three people can be here, it's good enough.
I'll be here.
It'll be... Shouldn't take very long, just open an envelope, should be numbers out loud. Hopefully, there's a lot of them left, Okra.
Yeah.
And if we don't, as I said, if we don't get it closed, if we, originally, we thought, well, we'll just do it in January, too rushed here at the end of the year, and they said, well, then you'd have to have a new audit. No.
Yeah. The next time you lose Thanksgiving, you're like, you...
And I was like, how are we going to get an audit done? We even, we even forgot state board accounts, and they said, yeah, let's just get it done for the end of the year.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, I think we'd be looking at, I could worry more, I mean, we would mess up everything.
Yeah.
We have notified I D M, and about the, because we ju, we just... We have notified I D M, and, about the, because we ju, we just, Justin just sent them a schedule that said, okay, we're opening bids on this day, and then, you know, two days later, it's like, um, so now we're, but it doesn't affect really the construction timeline, so, but I D M's fine with it.
I have a question, if I quote anything to a contact?
Not a problem.
Okay.
Anything else, Cindy?
No.
Good. Eight runs for the month, still counting, hundred and eight for the year, Pranks in the Park on Saturday, so we'll be up there, come get a hot dog, can't pay for it, but.
Five dollars.
Five dollars.
Five dollars.
And you get a ride.
It includes your ride.
And, and right, so, since Pranks in the Park, the park board's not here, there's a little plug for those guys, so, that's it.
Meal and a ride for five dollars, you can't beat that.
Great hot chocolate.
Yeah.
If you do something wrong, you can free ride from job, so.
Yeah.
I don't want that.
If you pay five bucks to the hot dog, do something wrong, free ride from job, give it to a tour guide, any transportation opportunity.
Got anything else, Scott?
No.
Get it?
Yeah, my only request is, in the springtime, I know it's not time to talk about it yet, but I've been pulling weeds all summer long, we've re-mulched at different times, it looks like crap, the, all of the edging is coming up, I would say, could we either hire somebody or have the guys dig it all up and put rock in, and we don't have to, we can spray the weeds then, nothing planted in it, we wouldn't have to worry about it. That's the only thing I have, because I don't want to pull weeds anymore, and it, they're getting beyond pulling now, all the black papers coming up, and.
I think rock would look nice, and they could just use pots with the flowers and.
I think so, too.
The rocks will be more of an expense than the mulch would, but then you don't ever have to mess with it again.
Yeah, in the long run.
In the long run, I might not, multiple times.
Oh, yeah, well, we've already remulched this year, and the water off the building just pushes it, pushes it all away.
That's a good suggestion.
That's all I have.
Nope, I think everything for this weekend's already been discussed, and.
It's like a busy weekend.
John?
Uh, as far as quotes go, we've got two quotes now officially for the basketball court relocation, still waiting to hear on the third one, Diane and I are working on the quotes for the fencing for the court, and I'm exploring our options for sandblasting and painting the old goals and, uh, painting the new court when it's done, our equipment's all operational to my knowledge, sounds like best case scenario, Breyer Judy's returning in November, probably the middle of November, obviously we lose Cody on the fourth, super shorthanded, do the best we can, so, lead service line inventory submitted to the state, we're likely gonna have more to do, I got an email that says I gotta notify all the residents for thirty days of our findings, haven't, of course, I've been trying to do vacations, so I didn't read it with a, like.
It does have an individual notification, it's not like a, can't print on Facebook or.
Every, it's, sounds like it has to be a mailer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I haven't stayed up on that stuff as much, so I don't, I'm not sure, if you need help, I'll look at it for you, happy to.
And then I'm assuming, this is the first one of those that I've been involved in, probably the first one we've ever done, but I think eventually, anything that's marked unknown, we're gonna have to go back and make knowledge, which is gonna be man hours and more time, so, we'll get through it, we always do, so, the guys are currently down, Nathan Gill's working on his project, they relocated the gas this week, they were, when I left today, they were sitting in the sewer pit, I don't know how far they got along that.
They're picking up the excess dirt last time I was down by there.
So cemetery cleanup's complete, our goal was to have that done before Halloween, I know it's, decorations could go back on November first, but if somebody wanted to decorate for Halloween, I'd say they're more than welcome, they're done up there, so, depending on manpower, hoping to get some foundations poured this fall, and we got some more trees that need trimmed that we haven't got to. I think that's it for utilities, unless anybody has a question. Long as we're on Mid-Curse Tree up in the middle of the road. We could probably do that. I'll make a note. Good job, anyway.
We don't know how to have to get a full crew.
On the police side, obviously very busy coming off the festival, seventy-one calls for service resulting in six felony arrests, ten misdemeanor arrests, thirty-four warnings and seventeen citations, the camper at three thirty-six East Wilkerson Street, last I looked, the straw had been removed and it was unhooked, so we're making progress there, the camper at thirteen seventy-four North Jefferson's been taken off blocks and unhooked, last I checked, and the Penn property at fourteen sixty-one North Jefferson, I contacted him just a day or two prior to the Bridge Festival and made him aware of our expectations and told him I would follow up after the festival, so that's where we're at with that, we participated in the career fair at Park Heritage High School on the third of October, and we'll have a representative at Pranks in the Park this Saturday, other than that, it's business as usual, and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
So now you can go back on vacation for a day.
Hopefully, huh?
Anything else from anybody?
Looks like Cover Bridge was a success.
That's the busiest one I can remember for a long time.
Not since I was a little kid, do I remember being there many people.
I don't remember it ever being so busy.
Yeah, it was busy.
It was crazy.
The weather helped, but having more stuff helped.
More stuff, more.
Yes.
I think Rockville's reporting record numbers, too.
Well, I feel like Rockville gained more vendors, too, and.
Yeah, they've done a really good job with it.
And tourist-wise around the county was high.
And overall, we didn't have a lot of issues on the police side, it didn't seem, I mean, I haven't looked at the traffic cameras to see what the actual number of cars that come from thirty-six was, but we didn't have a single car crash, which is kind of a rarity, but.
As more than Rockville can say.
Yeah. Well, we had a few people stop, like it was a four-way out there a few times that I saw, but.
Yeah, they do that.
Yeah. Luckily, people are paying attention, though, so. All right, will I make a motion to close?
Your turn. That's yours.
Thank you.